With the recognition of the AP Scholars and our retiring Susan Whitman. And we have students here this evening to pledge this pledge.
Steven James is a sixth grade student at Center Avenue School. Steven is a friendly, considerate, and caring young man who puts forth 100% in all he does. Maturity and reliability are two of his most favorable qualities. Steven is cooperative with all students and is someone his teachers can always depend on. He is often the first or second student to log on remotely for class meets. He is consistent with his work and is always there to help classmates if they need him. In his free time, Steven is involved in the Center Avenue band playing the garitone ball. He also likes to play football and basketball outside of school. He enjoys spending time with his friends and family too. He is an exceptional student who has made many fine contributions to Center Avenue's. Steven, can you come over and lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, under the small but pretty and just one.
Good job, everyone. Great job.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out. We appreciate you being here. Tonight, we're going to begin our recognition by honoring our AP Scholars. I'm going to turn the podium over to Ms. Kelly Woodman.
Good evening. Good evening, and welcome. It's my pleasure to present tonight our 2019-2020 AP Scholars. Despite the pandemic and a different format of the test, then the doctors took their tests online from home, we actually had a 30% increase in AP Scholars from the year before, from 17 to 24. We don't know that many of them are here tonight. We did reach out several, had conflicts, and some were unable to attend for other reasons. But I will call up all of our AP Scholars. We have certificates from them, and we also have from the National County Legislature, a additional certificate for their achievements. There are three categories of AP Scholars. An AP Scholar with Honor. An AP Scholar is an average score of at least three or higher on three or more AP exams. An AP Scholar with Honor is an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. An AP Scholar with Distinction is an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of the exams, five more exams. So, without further ado, I will... Anybody here? I see one. Okay. Tristan Aniano. Luke Araus. Sophia Bertolati. Gianna Campanaro. Mairead Connor. Lauren Cronin. Alessandra Di Sano. Daniel Gonzalez. Zachary Hiroshima. Samantha Laciana. Matthew Makavitt. Megan McCann. Grace McNally. Sharon Easterwick. Nicholas Canula. Sophia Passanisi. Daniela Petty. Emily Ramos. Taylor Rappula. Kate Lynn Reddy. Natalia Rigala. Alyssa Walsh. Gianna Wayar. And Marissa Welch.
Great to hear we have many, many seniors who have been out of college finishing their first semester, who've been through things, or who've been through those things. So congratulations to all of our students and their families, and I'm sure they're all watching your phone, so they will get their certificates now too. Okay, now I'd like to turn the podium over to Ms. Hett. Ms. Hett is going to speak tonight about our new elementary reading and bookkeeping arts program, called Wonders. And we have a teacher with us tonight, Kelly Hughes, who's going to...
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. As we get set up here, I just want to reflect a little bit on all that we've been expecting and asking of our teachers this school year. It's certainly been a very different one. We talk about that a lot. But as you'll see this evening, we are also in the midst of additional changes and asking them to do even more, as we're facing so many challenges as well. So tonight's presentation is going to be on the Wonders Reading Program. This is Peter's comprehensive literacy program, and I'm going to speak about how we got here, why we got here, and how it is going in our classrooms. So we have really been working very closely on our reading and literacy program over the last few years, as well as a number of other programs that you've heard about and seen from our teachers, from our students. And we are focusing very much on the literacy program because that's obviously the foundation of all the learning that happens in our schools. And we are on our way. So this is the process. Again, this school year is very different, and so with all the challenges that are going on, we know that implementing new resources and new materials is a challenge at any given year, certainly even heightened this year. And so I wanted to take a moment just to reflect on all that has happened in the elementary building over the last few years. You've heard about these programs, our Writers Workshop, Science 21, Eureka Math, our Tech Book Initiative, which starts in grade six, and then now our Wonders Reading Program. So a lot has gone on. We have changed materials. We've implemented these resources in response to some of the things listed here. We've been facing new learning standards at all grade levels in ELA and math, and science, and in social studies. We talked about challenging career readiness a lot, and we know that that's not something that we expect students to do at the elementary level. We don't expect them to choose a career. We don't expect them to choose to play for college. But we are responsible for ensuring that we have a foundation at that early in these grades to start the readiness process. And we also are very committed as a district, as we talk about often, to student engagement, making sure that our resources, that our materials are engaging, are challenging, are rigorous, and are appropriate for all of our students. And additionally, we are focused on equity and access, and we want to make sure that students see themselves in the materials that we use, and at the same time, that they're exposed to others and other backgrounds and other experiences, and have opportunities in the classroom that expose them to things they cannot find. So to talk a little bit about our literacy program, start with one of the pillars, which is the foundational skills. And we have a program called Fundations, which we've been using in K through two for a number of years now. That's not new, but that's where the basic foundation of language development begins. You've heard about the Writers Workshop program. That's something that we have written in-house units of study. Students experience opportunities for writing, whether it be readers and writers, we want them to have opportunities for reading and writing daily. They have whole group lessons by their teachers where they learn about what writers do, what good writers, how they approach their work, components of good writing, and they use mentor texts, which are texts that display those specific strategies or specific components of writing that we want students to learn about. They have opportunities for independent writing, for conferring, and then sharing their published pieces. And then also, of course, we focus very heavily on reading instruction, and that's where the Wonders Program came in to advance student learning and student opportunities. And these are some of the components that are included in the program, in our classroom instruction, and these are things that we continue to work on, continue to develop. And so as teachers receive professional development, they work together at grade-level teams, they work with building principals, and they continue to hone their skills in these areas. This is, again, an ongoing process, and as I mentioned earlier, with everything going on, it's really kudos to our teachers for taking this new program, these new materials, and these sources that we share. But students are exposed to fictional and informational texts, strategic rereading. They might go back to a text and reread for different reasons. They develop their skills and strategies, and ultimately all this development builds competency and comprehension. So just to give you a little background of where we are, because this is not something that happens overnight, and it's not something that's going to be done overnight. In the summer of 2018, we had teachers who spent much of their summer creating a balanced literacy framework for our teachers. So all of our classroom teachers have this in their hands. They started with their beliefs and what they believe about readers and writers and what our literacy program should look like. And from there, we have built, continued to build a foundation. So this is a bit of a timeline. Again, we started a few years back. The Fundations Program, the foundational blocks of literacy have been in place for quite some time, but a literacy cohort of teachers in both of our elementary schools have worked together on different components of literacy, on author's craft, vocabulary lessons, and on text structure. And then they worked with their colleagues to share good strategies and lesson planning in those areas, and that continues in our classrooms today. That moved to the balanced literacy framework in the summer of 2018, and then continued on with beginnings of our reading meeting where we knew we had a program called Journeys for a number of years. We knew we had to replace that for a variety of reasons. We needed more up-to-date material. We needed rigorous material. We needed more diverse material. So we were very... We took a lot of care in forming that committee and looking at different programs and different options. And at the same time, our Writers Workshop was developed, and that has been implemented in all classrooms. And then we made the decision to go with the broad Halle Wonders program, and we purchased the materials last spring, so our teachers were able to have some training before they left for the summer. They received the material in their hands before they left for the summer. And we also had cohorts of teachers work through the summer, both on Fundations for our younger learners, to make sure that the Fundations Program and the Wonders Literacy Program work together, as well as the Writers Workshop in Wonders for all of our grade levels. And so now, we're putting all those pieces together, and again, here we are in the early stages of really presenting and sharing this balanced literacy program for our students and continuing to support our teachers in that process. So why Wonders? What do those families see at home? There is a reading anthology. There's a reading and writing companion. Again, we want students to be engaging in text often, and we want them to be responding to text and writing. And the options for the literacy that's... The literature, I should say, that's shared in Wonders is really a variety of genres. Variety of backgrounds are represented. Experiences are represented. And again, we talk a lot about windows and mirrors. We want students to see themselves in the materials that they use in their classrooms, and we also want them to be exposed to others' backgrounds and experiences. There are leveled readers for the guided reading groups. Students read the same content, but they read it at their instructional level, so that we can ensure that students are supported and advancing in their reading process. This is particularly a challenge right now because of the distancing requirements. Our classrooms look very different this year, and our teachers are being very creative in how they're addressing this, but we do want to make sure that each of our students are addressed where they are and met where they are. There are also resources within the program for our A and L students and for students who need tier services, who need support services. There's a digital platform, which has never been more important than right now, and there's also a partnership with New Braunhold Wonders and Sesame Street. So our K through one students have opportunities within the program to learn about empathy, to learn about social-emotional, self-awareness, resilience. We have other programs that are pushed in or we work with students, of course, at all grade levels on social-emotional learning, but it's really more valuable when they see it within the context of their actual learning. So it's a great component that is added within this program. So this is... What is also at the digital platform? The entire program can be taught virtually. We, of course, don't want to do that, but at this time, it's really valuable that our teachers have access to this, that our students and families have access, something that they continue to learn about and learn how to use. It's a very rich program. There's a lot in it, and so we are not expecting all of the components to be used right now and to continue the learning pattern, but there is access for all of the teachers and students and families to be able to access the whole program digitally. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kelly Hughes. At this time, we don't want to bring too many people out of the chair, too much... We're trying to be distance, and we're also asking so much of our teachers. But Mrs. Hughes and I had a conversation about the program, and she was so passionate about it, and when we transfer to any of the materials, the question is often, what happens with the upper grades and how to use these programs before? That was certainly a question when we transitioned to Eureka, and so Mrs. Hughes is going to speak a little bit about that, the level of rigor in the program, and also the engagement pieces, and how relevant this material is, but also how smooth the transition was versus something like Eureka where it was a very different type of implementation. So I'm going to turn the podium over. Thank you for being here.
So on behalf of the K through six teachers, I just want to thank the students and the board and the administration for the smooth transition this school year and trying to reading program. The students transitioned with ease from Journeys to Wonders. Teachers will provide a training session during the spring of 2020. In addition, this fall, we'll continue our training education with more professional development. At the district, we have worked diligently to implement our district initiative over the years. We've been able to take the Wonders program and bring it to life through our hard work in thinking maps, learning intentions, and success criteria. As educators, we know there is tremendous value in teacher clarity and making sure our students understand what they are learning and why they are learning. A benefit of this new reading program is that it provides unique goals, writing goals, and individual reading goals for every student. The Wonders program has six different units. Each unit runs on a six-week cycle. The weeks are broken up into ten days. On the other hand, Journeys ran on a five-day cycle, and we noticed that with Wonders, students are given opportunities to dive deep into comprehension skills and strategy. This time has been valuable. It has given students a chance to focus on their literature and not only learn the content, but apply the skills and strategy throughout the other text and subject areas. Through enriching texts, students are learning reading and comprehension skills. We have read stories that introduce students to different backgrounds and life cycles. Students are able to learn about various cultures through expurgatory texts, fiction, and poems that we have been immersing ourselves in this year. For instance, through an expurgatory text, students in fourth grade learn all about children their age who have been innovative and started their own businesses. The text's love connection my students were making while reading this story was truly remarkable. Students told each other about how they helped their community members when they were in need. In addition, they were able to tell me about their goal of starting their own business one day. Students are so engaged in the literature that they can relate to the text and our reading connection. At the district, we have seen the success of using Achieve 3000 in grades three through six, and Foundation in grade K through two to help strengthen the phonics, fluency, comprehension skills of our elementary students. We have still been able to utilize beneficial programs while teaching Wonders. The Wonders program offers multiple avenues for differentiation, helping the needs of all learners across the district. Students are able to apply the reading skills introduced during our Wonders meeting lessons during independent reading time and while reading leveled readers. All leveled readers are the same cover and title, however, the leveled readers are written in varying levels. This is very valuable if students on different reading levels have a discussion on the same book. The digital platform. Now written ever, at the district, we are realizing the importance of technology. The Wonders program provides digital access for all learners. Each student has a username and password. When students enter the Wonders website, there are a variety of options that are available to them. For instance, students can use vocabulary at work. They also have access to a to-do list. This is work that can be assigned to a class or individually assigned to the student for their specific academic needs. Furthermore, students can access different themes that allow them to practice phonics, fluency, grammar, comprehension, and spelling review. Digital access to their Wonders material has been imperative this year, especially for our high-grade students in grades four through six. It has been beneficial because our high-grade students do not have to carry textbooks back and forth, and can gain access to their classroom materials through their Wonders account. I recently did ask my class what their favorite thing about the Wonders program is, and hands down, everybody says the digital platform. They really love having access to the different technologies that they haven't had before. So on a final note, I just want to thank Ms. Hett, and we're very excited for our Wonders program.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Are there any questions? Again, I can't thank the teachers enough for taking this on the way they had. Such a challenging year. There are so many obstacles put in the way sometimes daily, but connecting with students remotely and in person and providing the instructional using materials is really appreciated, and we're seeing better in our classrooms. So thank you to all of them.
And thank you to the students who were there tonight, and their enthusiasm, and for representing our teachers so well. We know that everyone's very excited about the new program, but it's also a lot of work. And who knows, to all of our teachers for stepping up and learning something enduring in this difficult time. So as Ms. Hett said, it's been more than a program. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hett. Excellent presentation. So our last presentation for the evening is retirement. We usually don't have retirements at this time of the year, but we will say goodbye to Mrs. Susan Whitman, the second-grade teacher at Center Avenue, who decided to retire at this time. And unfortunately, she is not able to be with us tonight because she's not feeling well, but hopefully she's watching at home on our live stream and explaining to Kelly, our principal at Center Avenue, who wants to be on her program. Thanks, Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to everyone who is with us tonight, as well as moving home. I wanted to take this moment to honor the career of a teacher who has served the East Rockaway community for over 18 years, Susan Whitman. She joined the Center Avenue family in 2002. Prior to her working at Center Avenue, Sue worked within the Lawrence School District for about four years. I have only had the honor of working with Sue the last couple of weeks, and the time we've spent together allowed me to see how committed she is to Center Avenue, her students, and most importantly, her family. Sue is supported by her husband Ronnie, three children Melanie, Haley, and Shannon, with her life dedicated to her three grandchildren, Lila, Levi, and Jules. Sue began her career as a teaching assistant where she ran the math lab. During her time at Center, she has taught grades kindergarten through fifth. What a career! In her classroom, she created a warm learning environment that centered on literacy and student independence. She has a love for reading, and coupled with her training from Columbia Teachers College, her classroom was a print-rich environment that developed that same love for reading with her students. In thinking about her perseverance, Sue tackled new learning with ease. She welcomed the new Eureka Math curriculum and took it upon herself to work with her colleagues in adapting her lesson to the new standards. Parents also had so many wonderful things to say about Mrs. Whitman. One parent shared that she would greet the children every day and made sure to learn about their unique learning needs. Students would come home and say that Mrs. Whitman made them feel special. This may be just a simple action on a teacher's part, but creating this space is how I know Mrs. Whitman's impact had a ripple effect. It was said that Mrs. Whitman covered all required materials and did so many fun activities with the students. In 2007, her class had a video conference with the Baseball Hall of Fame. Look at you, Sue. You're Zooming before Zoom was even cool. Not only did Sue make an impression on the families of East Rockaway, but she has also supported her colleagues in so many ways. She was the building representative that always advocated for her peers and ensured that their voice was heard. Miss Pateen shared that Sue was a loving and devoted mother and grandmother with strong family values. She is generous as being the first one to pitch in to support staff members and the East Rockaway community, witty as she made the best of tough situations by finding humor and always enjoys a great laugh. Lastly, wise, as she always shares words of wisdom to colleagues that she learned from her mother. Miss Rockham, her grade-level team teacher, had many wonderful things to tell me about Sue. She shared that Sue was honored at our Founder's Day celebration in 2017. In my opinion, such a wonderful honor. Sue is an advocate for her students, as the most trying day will never take her down. She takes everything in stride and works hard to help her students succeed and become independent learners. When I met Sue, she spoke about her love for East Rockaway, as well as the time she spent in Atlantic Beach. We spoke about how the beach brings so much joy, especially through 2020 and into 2021. When I heard of her retirement, I knew that we'd be losing a teacher where education was at her heart. Sue, just by what your colleagues have shared with me, I can see how your dedication has and will continue to impact generations of students that walk off halls at Center Avenue. Congratulations on your retirement. You deserve all the happiness and the joy that retirement will bring. You deserve all the happiness and the joy that retirement will bring. And more importantly, have a happy birthday tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, beautiful. And I hope that you're doing well today. And I wish her all the best in her retirement. And I always say maybe as retired at least as many years as you were. So I wish her all the best. We have beautiful gift for her that will be there and help to her. And hopefully she'll come back and visit when all the times go.
Okay, moving on to item number three. Agenda item three, public comments on agenda items. Anybody in the audience here? And at all, we monitor meetings on our Board of Education email. Do we have anything? Okay. Moving on to now agenda item number four, group minutes. Have motion to approve November seventeen, twenty twenty, meeting on the Board of Education. So move by Solhagen. Second by Mr. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Abstain? So move. Acknowledgement of monthly reports and correspondence. And item five, receive monthly class reports from October twenty twenty. Or then receive those and correspondence from the Board of Education. Again, even after one night at this time. Recommendation to superintendents schools. Mr. Ruiz?
Thank you, Mr. Bulcus. Tonight, we will be accepting the resignation of Christina Russo, Honorable effective January fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Also recommending that board approve an extension of the medical leave of absence for Donna Smith from her specialized teaching position through January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Also recommending that board approve the request of Christie Galante for an FMLA leave of absence from her art teacher position effective January fourth, twenty twenty one. Recommending that the board approve the winter sports coaching schedule dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And recommending that the board also approve the revised East Rockaway High School Club Advisor assignments for the twenty twenty one school year as proposed and set forth in the schedule. Recommending that the board approve the change of the FMLA leave of absence of Alexandra P. Antonio from her probationary science teacher position to be effective November twenty third through February twelfth, twenty twenty one. Also recommending the board approve the change to the effective date of the appointment of Alexandra De Vriesy as a short-term substitute science teacher to be effective November twenty third, twenty twenty two, February twelfth, twenty twenty one. Recommending the board approve a change in the FMLA leave of absence for Marissa Diamond from her elementary teacher position to be effective November eighteen through February fifth, twenty twenty one. And recommending the board approve change to the effective date of the appointment of Celeste Magliuli, Magliulo, as a short-term substitute elementary teacher to be effective November seventeen through February fifth, twenty twenty one. And recommending the board approve a change to the end date of Margaret Orgera as a short-term substitute elementary teacher through December eighteen, twenty twenty. Also recommending that board approve the four-year probationary appointment of Kalen McGuire to the position of elementary teacher effective January fourth, twenty twenty one, at the prorated MA thirty step four annual salary. And recommending that the board approve the appointment of Anthony Kimble to the position of short-term substitute science teacher effective January fourth, twenty one through February twelfth, twenty twenty one. Recommending that the board approve the appointment of Joey Candito to the position of short-term substitute art teacher effective January fourth, twenty twenty one through February twelfth, twenty twenty one, at the continued salary established by the Northway Board of Education. Also recommending the board approve the request of Carol Fernandez for an FMLA leave of absence from clerical position effective December first, twenty twenty through January thirty first, twenty twenty one. And recommending that the board approve the appointment of Narada Amaya Moran to the position of twelve-month clerical typist bilingual effective January eleventh, twenty twenty one. Also recommending that board approve the following temporary assignments at salary due by East Rockaway Board of Ed on a non-contractual salary schedule for substitute workers, and that is Simone Cowell, substitute teacher A, effective on social service approval, Lauren Radburn, permanent substitute teacher, effective September sixteen, twenty twenty, and Joey Candito, three D and substitute teacher, effective February twenty second, twenty twenty.
Are there any questions on agenda items six, eight, group P? May I have motion to approve agenda item six, eight, group P? So move by Mr. Di Matteo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kilgus. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Abstain? So move. Other items, agenda item seven, A. Approve the revised non-retractable salary schedule for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Seven, B. Approve the items on the sideline agreement dated December third, twenty twenty between the Board of Education of East Rockaway USFD and the East Rockaway Teachers Association, the ERTA. And author authorize superintendent to execute the letter of agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Seven, C. Approve the following resolution. It is resolved that the Board of Education accepts a revised corrective action plan to the financial order prepared by No Wiki Smith. The year ended June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. D. Approve the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts a revised corrective action plan to the financial order prepared by No Wiki Smith. This school year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. E. Approve the following resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts a corrective action plan to the Action Class Activity Plan Report of Examination, twenty twenty M dash zero eight five from the New York State Office of Control. Are there any questions on agenda items seven, A, through E at this time? Have motion to approve agenda items seven, eight, group E. So move by Ms. McNally.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Abstain? So move. Seven, F. Approve the contract for health and welfare services between the East Rockaway USFD and the following school districts for health and welfare services for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year and authorize the president of the Board of Education to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education to the schools that are on the agenda. G. Approve the terms of the letter of intent dated November twenty fourth, twenty twenty, with NASA posting forty-eight month lease for three Xerox multi-pass copying machines and intent on behalf of the Board excuse me, authorized insistent superintendent for financing operation to execute the letter of intent on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. H. Approve the Special Education Services Contract with Yulik Wunby at USFD for Special Education Services for two currently placed students from twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year and authorize the president of the Board of Education to execute the contract on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. Do you have any questions on agenda items seven, F, through H? Have motion to approve seven, F, through H?
So move.
So move by Mr. Di Matteo, second.
Second.
By Mr. Kilgus. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Abstain? So move. Seven, I. Approve the Special Education Services Tuition Contract with CFA USFD for Special Education Services for one student for the twenty twenty, twenty one school year and authorize the president of the Board of Education to execute the tuition agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. J. Approve the letter of agreement between the East Rockaway USFD and ATC Testing and Screening Services for COVID-19 testing services and authorize the president of the Board of Education to execute the letter of agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. K. Accept the following donations from Apialy Prince Incorporated, check for the sum of $221.54 for the East Rockaway Community Senior High School. And K two for Abibi Chesla and Brian Salzberg, a Cisco Access Point System valued at $1,500,000 in the East Rockaway School District. Are there any questions on agenda item seven, I, through K? Got motion to approve? So move by Mr. Di Matteo, second. By Mr. McNally. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? So move. Board received the CSC and CPSC recommendations. Are there any questions on agenda item number eight for the approval of the CSC, CPSC recommendations? There are no questions. Have a motion to approve agenda item eight. So move by Mr. Kilgus, second. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor? Both? Abstain? So move. Budget transfers, nine, A. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the following budget transfer. One, transaction number two-one, dash zero-zero-one-zero. Are there any questions? Got motion to approve agenda item nine, A, one. So move by Mr. McNally, second.
Second.
By Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? So move. Policy matters. I'll turn this over to Solhagen.
The policies committee met Monday, December seventh. Policies of adoption meetings. Number twenty-one, twenty, school board elections, poll actors. This policy includes one small change to add additional poll actors as per guidance from our school attorney. The second policy is four-seven-seven-zero, regulation. This policy was reviewed to add weighting for power to our courses. Policy number fifty-one-hundred, student attendance. My news was added to reflect attendance during the pandemic, which emphasizes the importance of student participation during remote learning and allows for various means for students to demonstrate their attendance through documented certification in online or virtual classes. Completion of assignments, documentation of various school activities, and learning of correspondence via online platform, email, and token. The last policy of our adoption meeting is twenty-five-twenty, board member training. This policy mandates that every board member will complete every one training per year which addresses topics of commitment serving successfully as board members. We will continue to review the following policies. Fifty-five-hundred, student records. Zero-one-zero-five, equity and diversity and education. Ninety-one-fifty, non-advantageous male. Fifty-seven-oh-five, federal funding purchasing. The school's mission statement and vision. Four thousand student planning standards and instruction guidelines. Forty-five-thirteen, library material collection. And ninety-four-twenty, recruiting and mentoring. Ninety-seven-hundred, professional awareness and staff development. Forty-eight-ten, teaching about cultural rights. Thank you to Mr. Tech and Mr. Rouse for joining us for the discussion on some of these policies. The entire board will meet on January sixth and January eleventh to review the equity and diversity and diversity and education forms.
Well, I tell you, Solhagen, Mr. McNally, your slave draft to the board will be the policy that I'm going to be reviewing coming up. It's a lot of work, but it's terrific work. Thank you for what you do there on that policy. So are there any questions on agenda item ten, B, one through four? There are no questions. They have motion to approve agenda item ten, B, one through four. So move. So move by Mr., I think it's Kilgus, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, second. Second by Mr. Di Matteo. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? So move. Agenda item eleven, reports. Mrs. Ruiz?
Thank you, Mr. Bulcus. I first just like to provide an update about the COVID-19 so testing, the micro cluster initiative. So I'm sure that you've been hearing a lot about this on the news. A number of areas not too close to us are not in. Two areas in Nassau County most recently were identified as yellow zones. So in preparation for the possibility of yellows of testing, again, we've not been identified at this time, but we possibly could at any given time the announcements are made on a rolling basis. We need to prepare for what that would mean for the school district. We created a parent as well as a staff survey to determine if we would have enough staff and students to meet the twenty percent threshold for COVID-19 testing. That would mean that we would have to test approximately two-hundred-and-sixty people, so combined students and staff across our three buildings if our district were identified. Because we're so small, we would probably assume that the whole district would be identified, but in Great Bank and in Nassau, people most recently, only certain schools in their area were identified. So those are the only schools that had to be tested. But of course, they're much larger than ours. We, so based on the survey, we have more than enough families and staff who would agree to be testing. So I thank everyone for their participation. We had a fabulous responding from both groups. And it's important that we all work together and we're really proud that our community supports our school staying open. Because in order to stay open, we would need to do this testing, which is a requirement. If we could not get that twenty percent threshold, we would have to close our doors, which we don't want to do. Right now, the testing plan that we have in place is to utilize our district school, our district nurses. I mean, I'm sorry, our school nurses, as well as an outside company that the board approved tonight that would come on site and accept health insurance for patients for the test. This plan would allow some flexibility for families and convenience for both families and staff. Parents would be allowed to accompany their children for testing if they so choose. But we would, we actually don't really want parents in the building during the day. We also don't want students' days to be disrupted for the testing. So we would be arranging for hours after school for those, that type of testing to be taken place. So our nurses would be available some days after school and then this testing company, ATC, would also be come on site and do testing. We hope that they would be available, say, two afternoons from, you know, until six PM to make it more convenient for parents to accompany their children to get tested. We would also be allowed, we would also be able to test students in school if parents sign permission without them personally being there. That's a personal choice, but we want to be able to accommodate all families and however they choose to be tested. We also, parents also, as well as staff, can also seek outside testing privately. So you can go to your own doctor, pediatrician, you can go to an urgent care place. Most people said, "Thank you very much for offering the testing" because they do not want to wait four hours online at City MV. So this will be provided convenience for our school community to have the testings on site. This company that we would be using would just be another option, second option, so that we can again offer as much convenience to people as possible and it would be at no cost to the district. There would be no copays for the families or staff who use it. And they would, the insurance companies would be billed. If someone did not have insurance, they would be able to be tested as well and the parents actively cover the cost of the testing. We also would have our nurses be testing as well. The tests would, in that case, would be provided by the Department of Health free of charge and we would, then there would be the rapid test, so we'd be able to immediately process them and then we would have to report that data to the Department of Health. But that would be done on a premises. I would really like to thank Mr. Bar and our school nurses for their support in planning for yellows of testing. And in particular, thank our nurses for stepping up to administer the test. As you all know, we have wonderful nurses. As you all know, we have wonderful nurses who do a fabulous job and they are always more than willing to do what they need to do to keep our kids safe and healthy. In both of these cases, the test would be a less invasive nasal swab. If you had been tested, sometimes the swab is all the way up your nose. I always describe it as the musicians preparing the leaves for, you know, where they pull the brains out of your nostrils, but this would be a less invasive model of that and just a very quick swab. The testing company, ATC, does offer the PCR test, which takes several days to get the results back, and the Department of Health tests that our nurses would be administering are the rapid test. So permission slips will be sent out soon in anticipation so that we're ready. We just want to be prepared and ready in the event we may never have to use them, but we would be notified and we would be expected to begin the turnaround times very quick and we have two weeks in order to accomplish all of that. So I'm really proud that our district is in great shape and we're ready to get going. Any medical, the medical information, actually the test results or any personally identified information will be kept confidential. Only the nurses and clerical will see that information as they enter it into the Department of Health database. That's another requirement that we have in order to participate in the yellows of testing to keep schools open, but they would be kept completely confidential, we would not have to worry about that. The cluster initiative uses data and metrics that identify a geographic area as either red, orange, or yellow, yellow being the precautionary zone. And the, actually the procedures for the orange and red zone have changed in order to be a little bit more practical and in order to keep schools open. We hope we don't have to reach any of these zones, but basically there's just an increased testing requirement. Initially, schools are going to have to close in the orange and red zone, that's been revised about two weeks ago, and we just would need to test an increasing, an increasing number of people in our school community in order to stay open. So we'll hear more on that. Hopefully we'll stay out of those zones. Winter sports. I know that we've been anticipating the start of our athletic season in January, but unfortunately the New York State Physical Education, I'm sorry, I always get confused what that stands for, but the governing body, the New York State of Sports and Athletics, has decided to postpone all high-risk sports until authorization is granted and to be reinforced by the increase, I'm sorry, and that was reinforced by the increase in infection hospitalization rates across New York State. The New York State Health Department has determined that the New York State Health Athletic Association endorsed sports to be high-risk, are basketball, boys' lacrosse, competitive cheerleading, football, ice hockey, volleyball, wrestling, and those are some of the sports that we do participate in. So unfortunately, the cancellation of winter sports is something that is disappointing. Hopefully now with the vaccination, there is a possibility that things could change, but that is the status right now and we only participate in high-risk sports, so those sports that we had planned to begin will not. However, we will be continuing our inter-bureals program, so our students will have an opportunity to stay out there and participate, and I thank Mr. Bar for his efforts in that area. There's really so much going on. You know, school is really, I'm so proud that we've been able to continue so many accomplishments and activities, even though it is such a difficult challenge in mind. Our special education and reading teachers in the area of achievement are working with literacy consultants, Harry Leo, to identify research-based literacy interventions and approaches that will best meet the needs of our most vulnerable learners. Also, the St. John's University Program has 26 East Rockaway students registered this semester. Twenty of 32 seniors and seniors in Spanish or H are registered for Spanish. One oh one of, I guess, 1010C and six of the 15 seniors in Spanish D and B are registered for Spanish 23C. That's really a very high number of students who will be receiving college credit for their participation. Seventy-three students received OLE Rock Award with Fall 2020 Semester on December 9th meeting. Students are nominated by teachers and building staff for demonstrating character traits of wisdom, empathy, respect, optimism, compassion, kindness, and all students received a certificate in their home from class four by now. I'm really proud to say that I also got the Rock Award and it really, I was very thrilled. So thank you to whoever nominated me for that. Going to get a drink. Things a lot. Students in Math 8 AIS were awarded with certificates based on goals that they set in completing their I-Ready lessons, and I-Ready is a digital diagnostic and prescriptive intervention system that students in middle school, ELA, and Math AIS engage with on a regular basis. We found this program to be really excellent and successful, I think it's making a lot of things. Two East Rockaway High School seniors committed to college athletic programs. Congratulations to Anthony Piazza, who signed with Western Connecticut State University to play baseball, and Leo Morito, who signed with Wade Forest University to play Division One soccer. So both rocks, we were thrilled and so proud of these students. It was a wonderful moment. Mr. Bar arranged a lovely ceremony for our students and their families. In the area of innovation, Raymond Center Avenue students in ways being free will be receiving one-on-one coaching with our instructional technology specialist, Andrew Showen, to provide them with training on the Google Classroom Platform, which is new to them this year, still be working in their classrooms to support them with this new learning, audio and video. The Showen continues to provide all teachers with tips on how to integrate the use of technology tools during our full remote, while we were in full remote learning in the spring, such as standboard, help them manage their virtual and personal classroom instruction. East Rockaway science research teachers took part in the university and the high school program's annual science research workshop, the Zoom, who were thrilled that our science research program is plugging along. The webinar began with opening remarks about changes to the UHS program, followed by discussions on how to teach science research during these unique times. In the physics, students engaged in cooperative learning activities that challenged them to be the remote teacher where they had to share their own screen and lead their classmates through the steps necessary to solve problems. They used Cani, a PDF editing tool, to livestream their work and Google to explain the steps to their classmates. In the area of connection, Raymond Center Avenue students raised funds and gifts for children in need during the holiday season. We hosted a toy drive for the Will Zink Foundation to provide new coloring books, crayons, and stuff down with children in hospitals. Our kids do so much, we do so much at this time of year. So thank you to our students and our elementary schools and social workers for organizing these activities. We also worked with Senator Kaminsky's office, Abbott's students and key club members under the direction of Mrs. Gissick and Mr. Pudo to sponsor the Thanksgiving food drive, more than $800 in gift cards and 46 boxes of food who was collected and distributed to charities in Long Beach for distribution to families. This is really becoming a inclusive problem, not just in our area on Long Island, but across our country. Food insecurity is on the rise, really tragic, so we should remember to give, not only at this time of year, and most people is when they do remember to give, but we should continue to try to donate and support our families in January after the holidays in order to give. Now, our key club and billiards club is working on another food drive, the Co-Drive, to help those eat during the holiday season, and the Junior Honor Society is holding a toy drive to generate toys for kids. All of these efforts have been very successful. Nineteen alumni from the class of 2020 presented virtually about their experience at our Alumni Day. This has been, this is always a successful day, the day before Thanksgiving when our kids come back, and I was really thrilled to hear that this year's graduating class reported that they felt very prepared for going home to college. We don't always hear that, so kudos to our high school or teachers for increasing the rigor and better preparing our students in the challenge of college. And thank you to the guidance department for holding that even virtual. At the junior senior high school, several teachers and support staff are completing outreach efforts to our full virtual learners. Teachers and support staff contact several full virtual students a day to check in and see how they're doing with their coursework, as well as to check in on how they are feeling socially and emotionally. So we are reaching out to ensure that our full remote students are engaged with, on tackle. Students in advisory completed the kindness matters, I'm sorry, kindness deeds that adorn the hallways with messages of parent concern for our fellow rocks. They now competed in a charade challenge where necessary, one break from the screen. On December 11th, Athletic Director Mr. Bar presented at the National Athletic Directors' Conference to over 200 athletic directors from across the country and Canada. Mr. Bar presented on how to build an appropriate culture in your athletic department and shared many great things that our coaches and teens are doing at East Rockaway. So thank you, Mr. Bar, for showcasing our school's program. Our counselors presented in 10th and 11th grade classes to explain the PSAT results. All students logged into the College Board to access their score summary. Additionally, they shared information about their tech programs and the upcoming virtual Taste of Tech Tour that goes, runs every year. The art department hosted their virtual art show. I will send it home to the board this Friday and it's just phenomenal. It's jaw-dropping, the work our students are doing under the direction of our art teachers is really, it's just my model of talent of our students' art, and a lot of the work was from our very successful college board, Oleo Night, that was held last month, and I dropped in on some of those conversations. It was wonderful, not only to see the beautiful artwork, but to hear our students speak so eloquently about their work and about the choices that they made in terms of their pieces that they put up there. The East Rockaway High School music will be posted, small on Supple recordings during the holidays, and the collection will be posted throughout this week. In the area of opportunity, rate kindergarten students modify their annual lemons over rain by reporting their annual prae to be shared with the community. Students in all three classes explore the book Lemons Over Broadway, the true story of the puppeteer of the Macy's Parade, and to construct their own life-size puppets of the parade. In Center Avenue, students in primary grades are working with our social worker every Friday, learning Asian emotion regulations and regulation, how to build better friendships using our on-the-second-step program, very important for our students. Our representatives from 55 different colleges met with our students this fall to review academic programs, updates to the college mission landscape, and create personal connections with our students. All visits were virtual and students were able to log on from home if they chose. The visits were also open to parents if they were able to join. Thank you to our guidance department. That's quite a large number of colleges and exposure for our students. Students across all A and E and Regents level courses were given workbooks to help students prepare for upcoming exams and to add additional support and materials for students in hybrid and over remote learning model. And last but not least, our National Honor Society students are working on service learning projects in place of community service hours, which have been made difficult to complete due to the pandemic. Students will be working individually with peers to compose a project, execute the project, present their projects in the spring. Thank you to our advisory for coming up with creative solutions to earning service credits. We go into their sharing what they've learned. And I wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and a happy, healthy New Year. We hope that there's relief on the horizon as we move to the new year with the vaccine.
Thank you Superintendent Ruiz for your report. Agenda Item Number 12, Good Welfare. Congratulations to Brianna and Peter Ostrander on the arrival of their son, Peter Anthony Ostrander III, on November 15th. B, congratulations to Marissa Diamond and family on the arrival of our son, Ais Everett Diamond, born on November 17th. C, congratulations to Lexi Petra Antonio and family on the arrival of their daughter, Isla Rhodes, born November 22nd. D, consult condolences to Kevin Fuller and family on the passing of his mother, Marie Fuller, on November 15th, 2020. Public comments on Agenda Item 13. Do you have any public comments on the email?
Thank you very much, Mr. Kilgus. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, board member comments. Want to start with my right hand, Kilgus?
Sure. I'd like to start off by congratulating Mrs. Lipton on her retirement. I wish you the best of luck. I'm also very jealous. I still have about 20 years to go, so best of luck. I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, Merry Merry Christmas, and most importantly, a happy and healthy New Year. Let's hope 2021 is a year of healing. We can all get back to the white light, the bright side of the world, so happy holiday. I just want to wish everyone in our district a very happy and healthy holiday. You know, in times like this, remember, we're all out here fighting battles that we know nothing about. Be kind, offer helping hand, inspire someone, smile does a long way during the pandemic. Thank you very much.
I say, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season. We all need this time of year right now, everybody needs to spend time with their families and just enjoy, hopefully be as normal as possible. I say a happy holiday.
I would like to congratulate the AP Scholars on this evening and Mrs. Susan Lipton on her retirement. Thank you to Ted and Zeus for your instructions to the Wonders presentation. This is clearly an engaging program and it's not only that students can read, write, and think, but it continues in the implementation of wonders. I wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a happy, healthy New Year. I hope everyone enjoys and much preserve and a relaxing day.
All members, before I forget, if you please send your comments to Tina tomorrow by sending an email. It's a lot easier to pick these up. Tina's working from home this evening, and that's why I mentioned. And move on with the comments. It's the presentation tonight, you know, to see how the district continuously moves, you know, the teachers, students, in an upward fashion, and all of our syllabus that are going on, and it's a great feeling and just how they're threading together the curriculum. So thank you, Mrs. Sack, for that. Mr. Ruiz, you did a terrific job explaining in case we go into zones, but more importantly, you did a great job of moving the district in its readiness in case we move into zones. It's a very difficult thing when you're planning something that's still developing and every day you're getting little bits and pieces of how it should go, but Mr. Ruiz was able to move that forward in a timely fashion and not only move it forward with compassion for our students, in going to the nursing staff and having the nurses be the front lines for East Rockaway District to deliver where there's a complex zone. So again, thank you for your reference there as we continue to battle COVID, but as we all feel now that I think that, you know, coming with the vaccine and we'll be moving, let's keep it moving that way. Our retirees tonight, I want to just thank their years of service. I know there was a different retiree that was mentioned tonight. If you want to pay mention, that's okay, but I do want to reach out to them both, all right, and to say congratulations and may the road rise up to meet you in your future. And retired teachers, one of the things that I received, I happen to be a retired teacher from the district, received an email from Frank Home, and they are doing an initiative where, again, you've heard this from Ruiz tonight, that all the giving that happens in all of our buildings here, it continues when the teachers retire. There's retired teachers and what they do is they're gathering up all of the gift cards that they possibly can, and they're going to be distributing them back to the school district to give out to students in need. And it's a lesson to be learned that, you know, it continues after East Rockaway, you know, his life continues. So thank you all for doing that, and especially to Frank Home for achieving that. And again, a happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas to all, and thank you for all you do. So right now, let's see, I can't see that followed up by what I just said, we will see. Eighty-two, twenty-two. I have motion to approve. Try to meet twenty-two. Of course, Mr. McNally jumped right on, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. DiMatteo, or Mr. Kilgus, I'm not concerned, I'm looking at Mr. Kilgus. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? So move. Thank you all for coming out. To be honest, I would just ask you if you could come up forward for a minute. Boy just wants to talk to you for a second. Thank you. And also administrators out of the internet, thank you.
You want me to turn it off? Off?